The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for a moment of silent prayer and meditation, after which will be led by the Pledge of Allegion by Commissioner Bryan.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joanne, will you please call roll? Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Vice Chair Heng?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Let the record show all Planning Commissioners are present. I see this evening we have no minutes at this time to approve, so we will be moving on to oral communications. This is a time for someone, for the public, to speak to us on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. We have one card here, resident Bryan Calderon Tubatabai.
Thank you and good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight because of my concerns regarding conduct during the last Planning Commission meeting, but more specifically comments made by Commissioner Gutierrez that may create liability for the city of West Covina as this commission looks into the CUP of the Five Star Inn. In the July 3 issue of the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, Commissioner Gutierrez stated, "Do not award bad behavior to a hotel operator who has allowed criminal conduct to occur on their lot." These comments are most concerning given the fact that Commissioner Gutierrez prefaced this statement by announcing his title as a Planning Commissioner while also proclaiming that he is the catalyst for the investigation of the Five Star CUP. Neither this body nor any governing body in this city has been presented with any facts regarding the CUP of the Five Star Inn. This quote is reckless and at the minimum Commissioner Gutierrez should recuse himself from any vote regarding the CUP as he is clearly biased against the operator. As this commission moves forward, it must also consider how one determines allowed behavior. A hotel is allowed to ask for ID, payment, and number of guests. None of that information reveals behavior. Is the expectation that hotel operators go beyond what is allowed to determine who they can reject from checking into a room? What are the determining factors? What liabilities are created for operators when they choose to reject individuals? Are the individuals members of a protected class based on their race, gender, or sexual orientation? Will an operator choose not to allow single women to book rooms because of fear of prostitution? Will they refuse black and Latino males for fear of gang affiliation? Will they refuse to accept vouchers given by the West Covina Hope Team because of the negative stereotypes about homeless individuals expressed by the community? American history says yes. And how long before these operators are facing civil litigation for civil rights abuses because of discriminatory practices caused by fear of losing their CUP? And what about the city's liability? If the city holds these operators liable for the behavior of guests, what is the city's liabilities for the city giving vouchers to folks who may engage in the bad behavior? It is not too long ago in our city's history that one of our most respected city leaders was found to have engaged in criminal behavior in a hotel. Is the expectation that the former mayor of West Covina should never have been able to stay in a hotel? Ultimately, we all understand that this is not about the Five Star Inn, but about the politics regarding housing unsheltered population. I'd like to end by highlighting the end of Commissioner Gutierrez' quote in the Tribune, "Put homeless people first." Commissioner Gutierrez, tomorrow, as you enjoy your air-conditioned home in whatever city it is you currently live, I hope you have a moment of reflection. You may even decide to visit West Covina and step outside in your $2,000 Dolce Gabbana shoes as the temperature reaches over 100 degrees. And as you do, I hope you realize the cruelty of your speech, the harm in your actions, the suffering you are helping to maintain. Your actions weren't leadership, they were an example of your ignorance, ignorance to the homeless plan that actually exists in West Covina, which can be found on our website, and ignorance in one of the major strategies this city has identified, Strategy B3, rapid rehousing, and that the City Council, including our Mayor Pro Tem Tony Wu, approved. Pathway Home was an opportunity to bring the majority of our unhoused population inside to heal and to come first. But once again, you and a couple others showed that politics comes way before people. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards?
I have not received any other cards.
Okay. Then at this time, we'll be closing on oral comments. We'll be moving on to our consent calendar tonight. Joanne, who will be presenting the staff report?
Apologize for consent calendar items, there is no staff report. All the items are just voted. If the Planning Commission wants to pull an item for discussion, then we'll go ahead and do that.
Okay. Do any of the Commissioners want to pull any of the consent items? We have two that's on, one that's on the docket for this evening.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Joanne, would you do the roll call vote?
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Heng?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We will now move on to public hearing items. We have Conditional Use Permit Number 24-01, a categorical exemption. Applicant is Emilda Julian. Location is 1816 East Merced Avenue. The request, the applicant is seeking approval of a conditional use permit to allow the use of a living health facility within an existing 3,700 square foot single-family residence in the residential single-family zone R1, currently being used as an adult care facility with no more than six beds. Joanne, who will be presenting the report this evening?
Assistant Planner Jerry Rivera will be presenting the staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Give me one sec, sorry. All right, good evening Commissioners, good evening Honorable Chair. This is Conditional Use Permit Number 24-01 for Oasis Congregate Living. I would like to give a little background. The zone of the subject site is residential single-family. The location is on the south side of East Merced Avenue. Just east of it is its intersection with South Azusa Avenue. The surrounding uses are residential. This is the existing site. This is the exterior, the backyard. This is the inside of the existing location. This is the site plan that was provided. The red color is the defined area that is currently being used for the current residence. There are two residents in each room being occupied. The blue color consists of three bedrooms that are being proposed for the new six residents. There will be two residents in each room. This is the business operation plan. The services provided are oxygen therapy, ventilator care, wound and post-surgical care, pain management, IV therapy, rehabilitation services, physical occupational and speech therapy, respiratory therapy, and more. For staff, there will be three employees at any given time, licensed locational nurse and two certified nursing assistants. There will be a cook, a registered nurse, medical doctor, and a medical director. There will be 12 beds that are being proposed, which are 12 residents. The business hours are Monday through Sunday, and it's going to be operating 24/7. The visiting hours are Monday through Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Planning staff recommends adopting Resolution Number 24-6149, approving Conditional Use Permit Number 24-01. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask the applicant. And I, the applicant is present. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. At this time, we'd like to open the public hearing. I have two cards. I'll start first with Pamela Sornoso.
I've done this before, so yeah, I am the resident behind this facility. We are backed up with the wash. We're back, the only difference between, they have a chain link fence, there's the wash, and then our fence. Any conversation, we can hear everything because we're that close. I can't, I'm not going to tell you footage, but we take up most of that backyard. The way the diagram, I say, it goes like this. Maybe this part might be, let's see, high feet of the neighbor. Majority is our backyard. Now, we dealt with something else with the Flag Lot several years ago that was passed on. But my concern is, because it is my backyard and my privacy, I'm very much aware of this type of thing, I'm sorry to say. My concern is the amount of traffic. Or, I mean, they've got a big driveway, but we're looking at traffic, looking at noise, whatever kind of recreation. That was very complete in far as information. It's a variety of health issues, and they're all adults. I know they built more on it because I heard all this building for the last several weeks, so I knew something was going on. They've got a huge pepper tree, so I don't know if that's going to be a privacy, but the original owners used to trim it down, but it's like a huge mass right now. So we're dealing with long-term and short-term term people. What kind of security do they have is one of my big questions. Are these people qualified for dealing with social services like Medi-Cal, Medicare type of, this more likely? What kind of activity in the backyard? And mainly the security, because all they have is a chain link fence. They have a gate, we have a gate. And I have two dogs that are very curious about a lot of stuff. So those are my big concerns. And our house is right there where the pool is. That's our house, right there. And yeah, so those are my biggest concern because, I'm talking to my husband, I think they've been there about 25 years. So we're pretty established. I talked to my neighbor next to me, Phyllis, who has the In-N-Out neighbor behind her, but it doesn't involve her, new neighbor next to us. I'm surprised I don't have anybody on the other side. They probably got this and thought it was electric or gas. They didn't really look at it. But because we're so close, we're right backing up to it. That's my concern, and that's why I'm here. I appreciate your time. Sorry, I didn't give you the courtesy. I was nervous. Thank you for hearing me.
Can I ask a quick question? What is it that, I guess, what sort of remediation are you looking for in the sense of, sorry, meaning like what kind of limits are you asking to be placed on the applicant?
I'm not here to make rules.
Sure.
But I don't want us to for it to disrupt my backyard or our, well, tranquility, I guess is the word, sorry, I'm nervous.
I understand.
Because it's very, you can hear everything, you know, and we're so close. And it's not like a wall. We're looking at, I mean, if we were sitting on our deck, we could probably see out that way. I don't expect to put a huge fence, but it's our neighborhood. It's our home. So you say, what am I expecting? I mainly just ask questions because it didn't make a difference to me. I just, concerned, I have had a long day. I have a woman, a friend sick. Don't take my demeanor as squishy, it's just teacattle letting out. So I don't have any hardship with anybody, but I'd like to know the boundaries, what I have and what I can use. My concern is the permit is there and they can use it. It opens doors to me. And I know about these facilities because I have a friend that's been in several of them. Some are in residential areas, but they are more of a business, you know, several bits. But in a home location, a lot of times, the ones I've known have dementia, things are not a lot of activity. But you have other people who may need more activity as far as exercise or physical stuff. How many times I'm going to hear ambulance back there? We already hear it right off of Azusa anyway. It's like white noise, but it's there. That particular area right there, Azusa is very busy. Merced is one of the main things that come from, you have to go all the way down Merced to go down Hollenbeck. So you have to use that particular street all the time, or a lot of people for the schools or for going that way. And where we live, we have to come up and around because our street, we're on Michelle on the next street. So my big thing about coming here is, what am I expecting?
Question, when the noise occurs or when it's affected you, has it been during their visiting hours when they're open from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
I wasn't even aware that that was going on. All I know is that they've been building and extending, or probably improving what they have. It's a large lot, we all live on large lots. We were blessed with that particular community. And it was apparently years ago, that's how it was broken up into large lots. The original person made that point. That's why the Flag Lot was like, no. So dealing with the traffic, dealing with the volume, and the security. Now, I have not, I know there's been activity over there, but I'm not a nosy neighbor. I mean, community, I mean, you have things going on everywhere in the neighborhood. But this is a business, not a residence.
Yeah, and I'm sure you're aware that when it comes to the state of California, that they have identified what we would term as healthcare facilities in residential areas. We're supposed to treat them like a single-family use.
Okay, even though there's multiple people?
Correct, correct. And so what the Conditional Use Permit process allows us to do, the city, is one, to make the public aware of the activity. My understanding, this particular operation started in 2023.
Okay. You know what month?
That, July.
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 July of last year?
Mm-hmm. So it's been around about a year.
I've heard conversations, it's not that I understand them and it's, you know, it's really not something I'm inquiring about. It was nothing that was over-concerning. I mean, it wasn't all night, you know, it's like, you know, type of thing. At this point, you're asking me a blunt question. Has it bothered me since then? I did not know it was going on, so I guess it didn't, it wasn't something that gave me a red flag that something was different. But it doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. Does this permit, okay?
So just as a point of order, we still need to hear from the applicant, and it shouldn't be a question and answer engagement right now. But we'll make sure we, obviously, we're hearing your concerns, and now we're going to ask the applicant to respond and so forth, eventually, yeah.
We have a second card, and it is from the applicant, Emilda Julian.
Commissioner, this is also my first time, I'm kind of nervous. I am, my name is Emilda Julian, I'm a registered nurse.
Sorry, can you pull the mic down for a little bit? Thank you.
My name is Emilda Julian. I am a registered nurse by profession and working as a registered nurse for 35 years. I work at the Director of Nurses in the hospital and nursing home, and I also worked at the Queen of the Bali 2007 as a registered nurse. I started congregate 2021 and been a business for a year. Thank you for the concern of the noise. As a traditional nursing facility, when they have birthdays, they have to celebrate. It's like in a nursing home. The family come, we had a music, we have the food, and it's not like every single day. I came here to propose six beds, additional beds, to help the community and surrounding hospitals. These patients are ill, they require an extensive care, and these families, they don't have expertise or skills to taking care of their loved ones in home. They're looking, these families are desperate to have a home, to feel like home, just like you and I, in a traditional home versus facility care. That's why I'm here to ask your permission to have six beds. And regarding the parking, our residents, family visitors can come and park with inside the gate of our residence home to maintain the integrity of our home. And also the visiting hours, we make an appointment for the families on the weekends only, and if they're necessary, an emergency, they can come. But like I said, we will try to do our best to minimize the noise, but I came here to help our communities, the family and needs, and help the hospital and the communities.
Okay. Now I'll ask my fellow Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
So I have a quick question for you with regard to the visiting hours on the business operation plan. It states that visiting?
Yes, 9 to 5 is our visiting, operation is 9 to 5, the visiting hours.
Are 11 to 8 is what it says? And that's every day, correct?
But for the family to visit and gather with the family, we like to make appointment on the weekends.
Okay, so there's no, so visitation is really only by appointment only during the week?
We like to, yes.
Okay.
Then we like to tell them to come on the weekend.
So if we modified the CUP portion of the business plan to indicate that visitation is during the week only, is that something you're agreeable to?
Yes, but like, if they really needed to come during the week, yes, we can do it if you, yes.
Okay, all right. And then on the weekends, it's, they can come and go between 11 and 8, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And obviously, if it's an emergency situation, somebody's deathly ill, dying, something like that, I, you know, making exceptions for that is certainly something I think is very reasonable. But just curious, what is the average length of time that a patient stays in the facility?
Actually, our patients are coming from the hospital. It's, I deal with the HMO Managed Care Medical, and they stay, it's like from four to three months to six months maximum.
Okay.
And it depends if they're custodial and the insurance wants to work with me, but they don't have family to take in care of, then I have to take in care of them.
Got it.
If they recover, I will transition them to a boarding care or assisted living.
Got it. So the maximum timeframe for a patient is going to be four to six months?
Yeah, four to six months. At the six month, I have to, the insurance is going to tell me, I have to tell the insurance that, okay, what are we going to do, is six months here and it's not recovering or where we can go, like boarding care or assisted living. But mostly, they will recover and we'll transition them.
Got it.
And the maximum.
And so you had also mentioned like birthday parties and things like that. Is that something that occurs only on the weekends, or how is that something that you guys deal with?
If the patients and residents, of course, weekdays, they can come, you know, let's say, 23 is Wednesday, so the family will come and bring the cake and cake and celebrate. But we limit them to an hour or an hour in our residence.
Okay, so visitation is only up to an hour?
Yes, more, yeah, more like, because we want to, like I said, reduce the noise in the neighbors, and actually, it's a big gap from the neighbors and all the trees, as you can see, you can hardly see, hardly, I'm not sure about that.
So with regard to the visitation length of time, that's, it's one hour because of the fact that your patients are?
Sorry to interrupt. Some family, they don't even stay, half an hour, one hour, they just go like 10 minutes and leave.
Right. And is that basically because of the fact that the patients that your facility serves are very ill?
They're ill, they're bed bound, sometimes they're incoherent, they don't have mental capacity to engage conversation, and they leave. Most of them are, we inform the family they're okay. Weekly basis, we call the family and they don't even come sometimes.
Okay.
On a weekly basis, no, sometimes months, sometimes, six weeks, four weeks, two weeks.
With regard to any of the therapy that you offer, is anything in the backyard area, is that where that takes place, or is it traditionally just indoors?
Mostly inside, mostly inside, but if they need extensive walking, then they will go, not actually on the back, because there's a lot of trees there. It's towards to the side to the neighbor, where the big space is like probably 100, 100 feet to the side by the trees.
Got it, okay. And then I had one more question about. I wanted to ask about, as far as the employee parking, it's along the side, is that how?
No, it's actually it's a circle, they can park on the circle, and I have a lot of parking, each can accommodate cars on the front, and like, I even park on the side. I put the slab on the side before it used to be a grass, I put the slab on the side on the front. Around the circle, that we can accommodate six cars on the side by the trees.
Got it.
And then on the side, and then the side, and on the back.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question too. So has the policy for visiting always been only on weekends?
Well, we try to put them on the weekends, it's not on the weekends.
And only because, I'm saying that because if you're saying that the families aren't coming, if they're limited to only the weekends, then there's something?
They can come on the weekdays, but sometimes we arrange, if family come on the weekday, some other come on the weekends.
Okay. I think that would be horrible to limit somebody to see their loved one.
No, no.
Only weekends.
No, no, not, sorry. We will accommodate on the weekends and on the weekdays too, but most likely, we try to do on the weekends. do on, on the week, weekends, because some family, they work on the weekdays anyway. We have a lot of therapy going on on the weekdays, they work with the family, sometimes they sitting there, they say they want to come back where they're done with the physical therapy.
Right. I'm not saying anything that you're, in the capability of your staff or yourself, but, you know, I, I know family, and including my mother, has been recently in a skilled nursing facility, and, um, you know, the family that's present, or the patients are the ones that get the most care. And I'm not saying, again, that, you know, there's any difference from the care and your son, but I think, uh, for myself, if one of my loved ones who's in your place, I'd like to visit, you know, I mean, my mother was, you know, an hour away, and I still went, I tried to go at least three times a week.
Yeah, we recently, because of the COVID before, we're trying to implement that, but not anymore. There's no COVID, so.
I mean, if you don't have people that are visiting that often, I just don't see why there's the limitations.
I don't think- We allow them on the weekdays too.
Okay.
So are you more or less like a skilled nursing or rehab facility after someone is-
Skilled is, yeah, Congregate is like a subacute.
Okay.
We, we serve like a ventilator patients if we have to, we have a tracheostomy, it's like bedridden, and they create this, State of California created because the shortest of subacute, and during COVID, they really emphasized this home setting, you know, to, uh, limit infection wise. Con- actually, in my experience, it's reduced the, the admission rate to the hospital, and the hospital likes Congregate setting because it's more, um, compact, not too many people gathering and it spread infection, and I reduce, I help the community, hospital, actually, I, I've been operated for one year, I have only two patients readmissioned to the hospital. And we put this patient in traditional nursing home every month, every two weeks, they're going to go to the hospital for change of condition. I manage them because I am an ICU nurse, and I have director of nurses in the hospital, and chief nursing hospital in the hospital, and director of nursing for 250 facility. I manage my patient, I personalize my patient, I place individualized case for my patients. And this is my passion, that's why I own this business, and I'm going to be there every day to make sure the safety and well-being of my residents.
Yeah, you know, I, I know that they are very profitable, but also very, um, you know, there's a lot of good that you are doing with that sort of, you know, I'm sure that you get a lot of fulfillment from helping your patients, since, you know, that's something that you chose to do as, as a career and a profession, so that, obviously, you have a passion for that too.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I actually have a question. So with your license currently, um, by the State of California, we allow only to have six residents. And-
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, you don't even have to come to us if, if the state approved already with only six residents. But currently, because you want to add in an additional six resident, that's why you needed the conditional use permit. So whether we approved it or not, you still have the six, um, the six pa- uh, residents?
Yes, ma'am. Rules and regulation wise, uh, Congregate living are allowed to have up to 18 beds by the State of California, if I, if they approved by the city, additional use permit. And like I said, I have a six right now, and hopefully I will, that's why I'm here to have additional six.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to ask to see, because assisted living, I, I'm not sure if this license that you currently have is like assisted living, however, you're, you're bringing a, a cure that's at a higher level, is that-
This is higher level. It's not, it's like hospital, long-term acute like kindred, then subacute, then nursing home. I'm on the middle of subacute and acute hospital. I'm level, I, actually, I'm like level to the long-term care acute like kindred hospital. It's like subacute with the ventilator, need tracheostomy care, need feeding gastrostomy to bed-bound patient, quadripletic patients, and need massive therapy, speech therapy.
So are they all high, high need?
High needs, high needs. And if they recover, the only thing they're going to, we need, and the noise, if they recover, they're going to be walking, but as soon as they walk, we place them to the lower level of care, just like boarding care and assisted living.
So what's the average age of, um-
Actually, we are from 18, uh, regulator wise, from 18 above.
Okay.
But I'm currently serving like, um, 50-year-old, 70-years-old, 75-years-old, 60-years-old, my patients right now, 40s.
Now, I can tell you, um, my mother was in a situation that she had to have a tube, um, surgically placed in her stomach, and so I was not able to provide all of the care that she needed, and so I know we placed her in a skilled nursing facility, and I was the type of daughter that wanted to go every day, to spend, even if it was just an hour in the morning, and then come back and check on her maybe in the afternoon. So the visitation hours that you have during the week, would family members be able to do that?
They can come. What I'm saying about the weekend is like when they have a party, I'm trying to do it on the party so everybody can gather, and no interruption with the physical therapies, but the visiting hours are 11 to 8 Monday to Sunday. When I say on the weekend, it's like family gathering.
Okay.
They can come visiting 11 to 8.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, and, and that's APM, right? And mostly because a lot of your patients have family members who work day jobs, right? Okay, yes. Okay, great, and then, um, yeah, and then, um, obviously, there's, uh, current, current city ordinances that will, if for some reason they were playing loud music beyond what our code allows, then there's obviously, uh, ways that the community could, uh, file a complaint, uh, even with our police department, so, uh, Joanna, is there any, uh, record of any complaints filed against this property for any violations that you're, that you know of?
No code enforcement issues.
No code enforcement issues, great, okay. And it's, uh, yeah, and, um, and obviously, when family members visit these, 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 these patients, I, I'm assuming they, they're happy to see their family when, yeah, so, okay, great, thank you.
I actually have some questions regarding the residents that lives there. Can you kind of describe a little bit more, they're not, traditionally, they're not, like you were saying, assisted living, who can walk, who can do a lot of the stuff themselves, uh, whether it goes to bath, bathroom, or feeding themselves, but this type of facility, if you can describe a little bit about what, what type of patients, I mean, you mentioned that they cannot feed themselves, so they need help with feeding?
Yes, I have one patient, one of the patients are having traumatic, traumatic brain injury, and he cannot even feed himself. Every time he use this spoon, he's shaking, and I have CNA to help him feed. Like I said, after the brain surgery, he cannot function, there's mental incapacitate, so the patients can't even verbalize that I need food, and it's like hemiplegic, he only moves to the right hand, that's one of my patients. One of my patients is amputee, and he can hardly walk, and we taking care of them bed-bound, and most of them are, three of them are diabetic, we do acu-check like six times a day, blood sugar 300, 400, 350. We give insulin like five times a day, that's one of those patients.
So I just wanted to understand in terms of, uh, activities around the neighbors, and I don't see, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm, from what I'm hearing, is like I don't see them be jogging around the neighborhood, or even in the backyards.
The activities we-
Because of the patients.
Actually, inside the house, we are hours, 9 o'clock, like after breakfast, like 10 o'clock in the morning and 2 o'clock in the afternoon, either walking, providing puzzle, or bingo, and walks, and watching TV and the news.
Right.
And some are reading, and some, and then we, sometimes we offer prayer from the priest come on the weekend.
I think for some of those types of patients that you have, adult care facility is much better than being in a hospital or skilled nursing facility, much better.
Much better.
Much better environment, and I think even better care.
Better care, and actually, I personalize my home, it's like I live there, and that's why, if you can see, you will not find a Congregate facility or boarding care, the way I arrange my facility, as Jerry came visit twice. And because I want to maintain the integrity of my residence home.
And for you-
Patients recover fast.
Mm-hmm. And for you-
Additional home.
Yeah, and for you to have zero code enforcement violations on record, and-
No, sir.
And for you to show that passion, you know, it's, it's so special that we have people like you who are, you know, caring for people who are, who need help and the second chance, so it's people like you who are sh- making our city shine, so.
Question, now, when you, um, if you were to be able to increase to the additional six patients, would your location now, um, actually have enough parking for your employees that would be shift employees, as well as for family members? Or would there be the need for people to park, or the parking to spill out onto the street or in the neighborhood?
I don't, I'm, actually, like, like I said, I have, I have only, what, four employees, four cars, and I co- I can accommodate 10 cars, 10 cars on the front, and on the sides, and if I have to, I can use on the back. I still have on the back. And I park my car under the tree, that's, my neighbor saying it's a big tree, I put my car under the tree there. And every single day, like three to four cars and the max. But I have 10 cars can park in the front of my yard.
So right now, your employees are actually parking on the premises, your premises, and not out on the street?
No, no, ma'am, yes, there's no parking there, it's a red zone.
Understood.
That's why they're inside.
Mm-hmm.
And as you can see, the lift car is on one side, and it's rounded, and on the side also.
Mm-hmm.
The side is a slab, I can park there, if I have to, but I never use it because we have ample parking.
And yeah, I think you mentioned that families have to make appointments, right? So they can't just show up.
Oh, they have to call, even in the nursing home, they call it, I'm going to visit my loved ones, because sometimes we're in the middle of shower, CNA are giving shower or caregiver, and we don't want to wait the, the, the family coming, so-
Yeah.
They call, and we are, you know, make-
Great.
Send to them.
Now, I'm aware that in a more or less, uh, assistant or skilled care, normally, they have a personal receptionist.
Yes.
And people normally have to sign in and sign out, even if they are a family member coming in. Do you have something of that nature?
And I'm physically there every single day.
So you'd be the physical manager that would be there every day?
I'm a, I'm the administrator.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Before I close the public hearing, um, I understand the first person, Pamela, you'd like to come forward?
Increasing six more, that's 12. I have been living with the situation of a friend who's had stomach cancer, so I'm ex- I'm aware of all this dynamics, rotating, feeding, changing, and in this process, they may have, according to this, three employees, but if they increase that, that's more employees, and they do a shift change, because I know when I try to call and find out, they have a shift change between, so we're dealing with, I don't know if it's, in, even in the hospital, they have shift changes, I don't know if they're at eight hours or 10 hours, I don't know how the nurses work, or they, uh, are, you know, how they rotate, so all I see is more employees. And yes, um, at certain times, that Merced is a busy street. The other thing is their backyard, which I was talking about, they have a chain link fence, it's only three feet tall. It's not six, it's three feet. Um, I don't know if that's a okay or not, and as far as our concern is, it may not be typical, but that pepper tree has been overgrown for several years now. I don't think it's a hazard, and it gives, like I say, it gives privacy, so I see the dynamics, and, and I'm not taking away from the heart of doing and helping, but I can see the progression, uh, of adding six more to what, at this point, um, I have no complaints, I was not even aware of the situation, and it's been fine. But I can see additional traffic, additional parking, and even if they do park in the back, uh, that's her option, but we deal, like I say, it's just a three-foot fence, and it's not like a, uh, it's not a security wall, it's just, it's just part of, I never understood why they kept that fence, like, from the very beginning, uh, because it was already existently there. And our fence is chain link, but we have wood attached to it, so it gives us more of a, a blank slate.
Yeah, um, when it comes to a conditional use permit, when that comes before the planning commission, we have set findings that we have to make.
Oh, they'll check that out.
So, well, no, what happens is the staff has already evaluated the location, and what they are telling us, the conditions of approval that they have put together-
Mm-hmm.
They believe will sufficiently dr- address-
Okay.
Um, concerns. There, um, when they talk about a nexus, it's not like they're physically making the building larger, they're using the existing building and just making whatever improvements inside. That being the case, we're not in the position to start asking them to do certain other types of improvements.
Can I ask the question, what has been going on as far as building? If not, I thought you were redoing a roof?
Wait, wait, you need to direct-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Comments to us here in the commission, okay?
I apologize.
Okay.
Here's, okay, I don't have to eye contact, I'm used to eye contact, I apologize.
Uh-huh.
Not do, no disrespect. Uh, there has been work being done on the house, so does that mean they extended the rooms that they needed to add the six more, or did they do the roof? So there has been work done, not just on the inside, I believe, and I'm not, I, I just hear it, it's just been something I've been hearing. That's my curiosity. But my main thing, we'll put that to the side, is adding six more beds, more care, that kind of thing. My concern is the traffic. I don't think our neighbors around the area understood the dynamics that was going on, or they just didn't care. But I would, if I was the resident in front of this facility, or this home, I'm going to call it a home, I'd be concerned, but that's not, that, but I'm, I'm in the backyard, not the front yard.
Understood.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Jerry, question that I have, um, when you went out to the site, and you've gone out there a couple of times?
Yes.
Now, are you aware of, um, any exterior work, or have they described any exterior improvements?
I didn't see any exterior, um, changes. No, I didn't, I didn't mean when I went out there, I didn't see anything, I didn't see any work being done. Um, I went inside and, I mean, there was a cook there, cooking for the, for her residents, um, that's all I saw.
Okay. Um, if the applicant would, you would be welcome to come up. So the questions that's been raised, um, there's the inquiry as far as, if you could explain to us, do you have any future plans of physically expanding-
No, ma'am.
Building itself?
No, ma'am, it's already built like six beds.
Okay.
The noise that's hearing the pounding is like when we had rain, I think like six, six months ago, four months ago, and most of the facility has flooded also. My guy is fixing the rope.
Now, I did see, it looks like you're having the facility re-roof, because I did see the plywood.
The rope, the rope is like, because one of the surveyor came, and I think they see that's, there's a stain there, so I have to fix it.
Okay. So just normal maintenance and repairs, what you're doing?
And that's for pounding, and as you see, those, those roof has been old when I bought that house, so they're pitching the edges, like every four feet, and finding if they can see something falling, so they're just replacing, it's not, we didn't add anything, that's the same structure like when I bought the house.
Yes, and I did also notice that the curb is painted red, directly in front of your location.
The only thing I add is the slab on the side.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further discussion?
No, I'd like to motion to adopt resolution number 24-6149, approving conditional use permit number 24-01.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved in second. Joanne, would you please read the roll call?
Aye. Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hang?
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
There will be a 10-day waiting period before the decision would be final. If you wish to appeal, you'd file that with our city clerk's office. At this time, we have some non-hearing items. Item number four, appointment of the new design review subcommittee members. Do I have any nominations or volunteers for the subcommittee to serve on design review?
Yes, Brian?
Okay, I have one. Have Brian. We need another one. Okay, Commissioner Hang. Okay. So we have Brian and we have Commissioner Brian and Commissioner Hang. Could we have?
Alternate also.
An alternate. Who would like to serve as an alternate? Okay. We have Commissioner Becerra. Do we need to do a roll call vote?
We can do that.
Oh, okay. If you would, please.
Commissioner Becerra?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hang?
Aye.
Chair Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Commissioner Gutierrez and Commissioner Hang are the subcommittee members. And then Commissioner Becerra is alternate.
At this time, commission reports, comments, or on miscellaneous items. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Okay, if not, community development director report. Joanne?
So the first item that I'm going to go ahead and report is that previously the planning commission voted or adopted a resolution to revoke the conditional use permit for rebel yell, the conditional use permit for outdoor dining and also the administrative use permit for the alcohol sales, rebel yell. It was appealed to the city council. However, the business owner's attorney contacted the city attorney and asked if they can have some time to potentially sell the business. But during that timeframe, the business owner withdrew the appeal. And now the conditional use permit and the administrative use permit is officially revoked since the planning commission's decision stands.
Okay. Thank you for that update.
As far as city events are concerned, the summer concert series has started. It's going to be on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM. And it is going on until July 31st of this year. The cool kids of summer have started and is being held every Friday until August 2nd. It rotates, it goes to different parks. I believe this week it'll be at the Sportsplex. There will be a reading adventure on July 23rd from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Shadow Oak Park. And also the West, the city of West, the West Covina LA County Library has reopened. So it's now open to the public. This concludes the community development director's report.
Okay. Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7, yeah, 7:58 PM.